All right, I call this meeting to order. Stand for the motion. One call please. Public comment, you do have one person sign up this evening, Brandon Westhoff, sorry. And you will have five minutes to consent.
Sure.
And then you could please also state your name.
Staff from the two mile high cliff to Cripple Creek. I want to thank the council for running me through that this evening. You guys have got this piece of paper, hopefully. Melissa, toss it out to you. We're asking city council to include us in the 2025 event for all of those events. This is a contract with Petroville out of Utah. They buy down houses and with forty by sixty foot pool that has attraction or as votes. And we would like to bring that to Donkey every day this year. You guys see there's a first round price of $12,000. That is down from fifty thousand dollars. Is what they regularly charge because we're repeat customers and we're probably booking. And we are looking to advise a pretty much. We asked to play pass now and the two mile high cliff will hook you back. And we pulled the other half at the end, so that's why we're submitting another discount. And if you guys do help us pay for this, we would like to be able to give it to the public. Definitely go for free. And we'll be sponsored by the City of Cripple Creek. We'll have signage. And you guys will be impressed with this system and acknowledging your contribution to Donkey every day. And we'd also like to ask the fifty thousand dollars. All tests of twenty twenty five. We'd like to bring some more attractions. We're in talks with Airbound up in Fort Collins. The bounce houses actually cost us money this year. They were boot terminal. I would need to make for us a little different. They're trying to bring in some smaller kind of rooms. And we're still in contact in negotiations with that. We don't have contracts for that yet. So that's why I would just like you guys to maybe set that aside. If we use it, we do. If we don't, we go back to the general ledger. Yeah, all right, please.
Yeah, because it's public comment, I don't think we can discuss.
And I just want to tell you one thing. So if this is being built, so we got. So the process of the three K times was about fifty thousand five hundred dollars. We got ten thousand from New York. And we're going to take five thousand from the. Fund we guys gave a slash here from the preservation of so from the take back or towards that.
So, good. Thank you. Moving on to approval of meeting minutes from the October ninth, twenty twenty four special meeting and the October sixteenth, twenty twenty four Cripple Creek City Council regular meeting. Has the council had an opportunity to review the minutes? Any changes or revisions stated? All right, can I get a motion, please?
Um, the motion for the program minutes for the twenty eight, twenty two, twenty twenty four special level and October sixth, twenty twenty four.
One second.
Well, please, Chancellor Bowman.
Yes.
That's the slot.
Yes.
That's the opening area.
Yes.
Mayor Brandon Brown.
Yes.
Mayor, yes. I'm looking on to reports. City Administrator Frank Salto.
Hello, James, uh, Jason, who has been working today. He'd be putting an operator on the fifth of November, ten years with the city. Name Sergeant Robert Kyler with the police department. On the twelfth of November, fifteen years with the city. My leave tomorrow is canceled, so I'm not going to Austin, Texas.
Yes, yes.
It's getting out of here. That's all I have in here.
Thank you. Finance Director Money Edwards, who is online.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Durham and council members. I'm having some technical difficulties. I hope that you can hear me.
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Um, the first thing I'd like to report on are the September gaming industry numbers. On a statewide basis, the entire industry's A G P was down five point six million dollars or five point six percent from August of twenty twenty four. Cripple Creek's September twenty twenty four A G P compared to August twenty four. A G P was down two hundred and forty one thousand dollars or one point four percent. However, in the comparison numbers to twenty twenty three were up with September twenty twenty four over twenty twenty three, up one point nine million or twelve point eight percent. And the year to date numbers up nine point seven million or thirteen point two percent. Cripple Creek's September coin in and table drop compared to August was up one million dollars or point five percent. Compared to September of twenty twenty three, coin in and table drop was up nineteen point four million or ten point two percent. And year to date, twenty twenty four over twenty twenty three, coin in and table drop was up seventy three point four million dollars or nine point seven percent. Cripple Creek's market share increased to seventeen point nine percent over August and increased two percent over September twenty twenty three numbers. Next, I would like to report on the device fee count for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty four. Um, the device numbers were three thousand and forty one devices, which is a decrease over the previous quarter of ten devices or three tenths of one percent. The device count continues to be over three thousand devices um, compared to the pre COVID device count for the first quarter of twenty twenty. Of three thousand five hundred and eighty five devices, the count is still down five hundred and forty four machines or fifteen point two percent. So um, while we're holding over three thousand devices continuously, we still haven't reached our pre COVID numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I was saying our public works. Uh, this morning, uh, we were sitting on this train one or two a year. And my child, I went to work for thirty. They had a good chunk of the mental barriers. Pass the ball. Ten. Everything was clear. They were doing a little bit cleanup and our guys are fabulous. Ever seen that elevator while you're getting out of there? When you just giving them reasons, thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, and before I move on, I would just like to take a moment to commend Stephanie Keys and the Teller County Clerk of the Coroner's Office um, for their efforts yesterday in the election. It was a safe and secure and smooth process. And to my knowledge, it was very uneventful, which is ideal. Um, and also thank you to the volunteers that put in all that time yesterday because um, we, we dropped off our Dallas in person and it was very, very active over at the Centennial Building. And I believe that Teller County with the increased measures that we have in place that go above and beyond what the minimum standard, I would say, is that we are exemplary in what a well run election should look like. And so I just want to congratulate them and thank them for all the work yesterday. So, moving on to proclamations. I do have a proclamation recognizing Veterans Day that I will read at this time. Whereas Veterans Day is a time to honor and express our deepest gratitude to all men and women who have served in the United States Armed Forces for maintaining our nation and preserving the freedoms we hold dear. And whereas the dedication, sacrifice, and courage of our veterans have safeguarded the liberty, security, and prosperity that define our way of life, ensuring that future generations can enjoy the same freedoms. And whereas our veterans have come from all walks of life, representing the diversity of this great nation, yet united in their shared commitment to protecting the ideals of democracy and freedom. And whereas it is essential to recognize not only the valor displayed on the battlefield, but also the countless contributions veterans make as community leaders, educators, first responders, public servants, and in many other roles that strengthen the fabric of our society. And whereas as a community, we are committed to honoring our veterans, not just on this day, but every day by supporting their well-being, ensuring access to services and opportunities, and fostering a lasting respect for their sacrifice and service. And whereas on this Veterans Day, we would like on the service of those who have donned the uniform, those currently serving, and those who have made the ultimate sacrifice, ensuring that their legacy continues to inspire future generations. Now, therefore, the city council, on behalf of the city of Cripple Creek, state of Colorado, do hereby proclaim November eleventh, twenty twenty four, as Veterans Day in Cripple Creek and encourage all citizens to recognize the valor, service, and sacrifice of our veterans and to observe this day with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and expressions of gratitude for those who have served in the United States Armed Forces. Um, on that note, I want to also thank the American Legion Post one seventy one. They will be, um, we will be having our Veterans Day Assembly at the high school on Monday. And so we've been partnering with them for years. So we're grateful for that and very grateful for veterans in the community. I'm moving on to new business. Agenda item A, consider approval of an updated Title VI and Language Assistance Plan. Transportation Director Ted Schweitzer, is he on the phone? Okay, good. All right, Ted.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm before you this evening to seek approval of a Title VI plan and a language assistance plan. Both these plans have been in existence. Recently, we had a visit from C dot. And we also had a consultant take a look at these plans. They made recommendations. We took the recommendations onboard. We made the changes. A lot of it had to do with language and updated demographics for our area. Um, things along those lines. So we made all those changes and to comply with the grant agreement. We need to have this done every three years. So that's why I'm before you this evening, seeking approval of the updated Title VI and Language Assistance Plan. Once you approve this, I will forward this onward to the Colorado Department of Transportation for their records so we can continue to get funding.
There was no impact on budget for this.
No, there's no impact on budget for this.
It looks like it was approved in twenty twenty, so that's where it goes. So.
Now, three questions or discussion? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I would be mentioning that we approve an updated Title VI and Language Assistance Plan.
Okay, well, please. That's all.
Yeah.
That's the woman.
Yes.
Mayor Protagonist Brown.
Yes.
That's the veteranary. Yes, Mayor Gary. Yes. Agenda item B, consider approval for flooring replacement at the Cripple Creek Heritage Center. Um, Heritage Center Manager Michelle Roseau.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm seeking approval to move forward with the replacement of the flooring in the Heritage Center. Um, this was already put into the twenty twenty four budget last year. So there is no budget impact and I have two quotes that I have provided.
Um, I'd like to make a suggestion that the women company is Stevens Carpet Plus. They did the new carpeting of the Alex Club. And he did a really good job. It was fast. I don't think great early. He's local and he also did a job at the River High School. And I think he's pretty much kind of the same, which she's talking about there. So I would suggest giving it and he's cheap. I don't know. I don't think he's, he's a good guy. He's, he's a good guy. He's hardworking.
Yeah, he did an amazing job. Everybody else.
So that will be your recommendation. Because that's what she's, yeah, that would be mine. Sounds great. What will be budget for? I mean, on the total. Oh. It was six and nineteen, I believe. Do you have the total, Michelle?
I'm sorry, the audio is very, very poor. I, I can't hear you.
What was the amount of this budget?
The amount that was budgeted was forty thousand.
Well, because they're the lower bid and you guys had a positive experience with them, I have injections too.
Yeah. It's probably funny, I couldn't put, that's why some council. I make a special relief. Uh, have Stevens Carpet Pass. I have a force of Colorado to do the replacement of flooring at the Cripple Creek Heritage Center. One second.
Well, please.
Yes.
Paul Schlau.
Yes.
Mayor Protagonist Brown.
Yes.
That's the veteranary. Yes. Mayor Gary. Yes. Agenda item C, first reading to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash ten, an ordinance of the city of Cripple Creek, Colorado, amending Article one of the city of Cripple Creek Development Code and amending Chapter six of the Cripple Creek Municipal Code by the addition of new Article eleven concerning the regulation of natural medicine in the city of Cripple Creek. Is that, who's presenting?
You will be chief of M. And your ordinance together, the chief you have. And do you want to, uh, and do you want to break up anything?
Yes, I think I would appreciate being able to make an introduction on this matter um, and provide some background on the proposed ordinance. And then I would invite Camille to add on because the proposed ordinance proposes some regulations on what is called natural medicine businesses. And we have presented it for the council's consideration with some placeholders in it um, for where these would be located and for hours of operation. And um, Camille can suggest um, some recommendations for council's consideration um, to fill in those placeholders. I'm going to stop there because I do intend to provide a bit of background. And this will only work if you can hear me well. And if not, uh, my recommendation is we would table this to the next meeting um, so that I can be there and be present. What works best for the council?
We can hear you.
Great.
Well, then let me tell you uh, that we are where we are because our voters in the state of Colorado in twenty twenty two passed what has been called the Natural Medicine Health Act of twenty twenty two. And as a result of that act, um, there are certain types of businesses that are now allowed in Colorado. And the state of Colorado will begin to license those types of businesses. And uh, they will be able to be allowed to begin to operate in January of twenty twenty five. And uh, in order for local jurisdictions to have a um, say in where those will be located, should the jurisdiction care to do so. Um, it is important that the board or that the council um, pass regulations prior to January first, twenty twenty five. And that's why we're here tonight to give you an ordinance on first reading uh, that you can uh, think about. Obviously, no decisions tonight. Uh, it will be scheduled like all ordinances are for a second reading should council want to uh, schedule it for a second reading. And at that time, a public hearing would be held. And you would be able to consider even then further changes to the proposed ordinance. So it is coming to you in a rather short timeframe, but uh, but that is the reason why. Uh, so I'm going to stop there. Are there any questions about the timeframe with regard to the ordinance?
I'm speaking to me. I didn't watch out with the telephone. But.
Unfortunately, I can hear almost everybody pretty well, but. Now, so Member Trenary's audio is not, I can't hear it at all. So I can't hear anything that you're asking.
I don't know.
You know. Where was your allowance to the women talent and what is this business? I mean, how did you?
You can't knock down. You have to regulate it. You can't just say you don't want it in the city and not, and not have them. They're allowed in the state of Colorado unless and understanding the ordinance.
Yeah. So. Then I'll go into a lot of that background, but let me just stop here. With regard to the timing, the need to do this by January first, is that? Is that, you have any questions on just why, why we're bringing this to you now and the timing? Okay. Then let me provide a little bit of background that I think goes to, from what I, I can gather. Make those accounts, remember Trenary's question. So again, uh, in uh, November twenty twenty two, the voters of Colorado approved a proposition that put into effect the Colorado Natural Medicine Health Act of twenty twenty two. The Natural Medicine Health Act contains two important prongs. First, it defines certain psychedelics, including psilocybin mushrooms, as de-criminalized natural medicine. That is legal to cultivate and possess in personal quantities, but not to produce at commercial scale or to sell or exchange for any type of other valuable consideration. Secondly, the Natural Medicine Health Act creates a relatively narrow and tightly regulated therapeutic path for adults to legally purchase psilocybin products and consume them at a licensed healing center under the supervision of a licensed facilitator. During the twenty twenty three legislative session, the Colorado General Assembly enacted a bill which amended and clarified key provisions of the citizen enacted Natural Medicine Health Act. What this act did uh, was to um, allow, was to make it very clear that unlike marijuana businesses in Colorado, which jurisdictions have the option to opt in or totally prohibit within their jurisdiction. The natural medicine businesses are allowed as a use by right and cannot be prohibited. So local jurisdictions uh, can only regulate these businesses uh, with regard to time, place, and manner restriction. Typically, those are um, seen, uh, the, the types of uh, place, time, manner restrictions that we see. And there really haven't been too many of these passed yet in the state of Colorado. People like um, cities and towns like Cripple Creek are kind of doing this right now at the end of the year to meet that deadline. But typically, the type of time, place, and manner restrictions that are being um, adopted are those that have to do with the hours of operation. And where, so as a matter of zoning, where the, the healing centers and the cultivation can occur. And then um, the distance requirements. So the state law does already include a one thousand foot um, distance requirement for these businesses when they are um, licensed by the state from the property line of childcare centers, preschools, elementary schools, middle schools, junior school, junior high or high schools, and residential childcare facilities. So that thousand feet can be increased and the types of schools can um, that, that want, that a jurisdiction wants to list in that list can be extended. So you could add more types of schools.
Those. City parks, city guys. So. Some city churches.
Yeah. Church. Which is not included in that list. So that's really some background. I, it, I think it's a little bit helpful to understand what happens in the natural um, medicine industry and what's, what will be the tightly regulated, so to speak. Um. Goings on in the um, healing centers. As for, for me, this was all completely new. So I, I think it's a little bit helpful before you start talking about how you might want to or how you might not want to regulate these new businesses is to understand a little bit what happens in the healing center. So a natural medicine, ma- natural medicine services are defined as three things. A preparation session, an administrative, an administration session, and an integration session. Thus, a participant will engage in three distinct statutory defined sessions within a, with a facilitator. Before the participant consumes natural medicine, the participant and facilitator must meet for a preparation session. The preparation session will include a screening component to determine whether the participant is an appropriate candidate to consume natural medicine. And if so, to educate the participant on what to expect and what to do if they experience health problems or psychological distress during the administration session. During the administration session, the participant will consume the natural medicine under the facilitator's supervision at a licensed healing center. The last of the three sessions is the integration session, during which the facilitator and participant meet to discuss the participant's experience. So again, that's just a real uh, high level overview of what the, the person, uh, the patient, the recipient. Uh, I guess they call it the participant would be doing in the healing center. Given that, um, some jurisdictions have moved um, to put in place some regulations. We have sort of gathered those regulations and. In and uh kind of accumulated them and we have brought to you a proposed ordinance. That would. And the the pro- the proposed regulations that are included in this ordinance, again, can only be. Time, place and manner restrictions. So the first that this ordinance would do is it would define. A location for these businesses. And after I get through this list, then again, I would invite Camille to come up and she can talk to you a little bit more about. What staff might recommend with regard to where. These um healing centers would go. The other thing that these regulations do, obviously they have a lot of, they incorporate. Important definitions and they take those out of the statute, um, so that's where those come from. But again, what they. They do next is that they. Impose a. The uh distance restrictions. The thousand feet that uh state law allows. Uh, from the various lists of the type of schools. I would note for your. For your um information. That there are some jurisdictions that have also included a distance restriction. From single family dwellings, duplexes or multiple family dwellings. Residential dwellings. For purposes of what we presented to you, we included that. Um, restriction because we are still researching um whether or not a statutory city. Unlike a home rule city, uh which is uh some of the home rule cities are the ones that have included this additional thousand foot. Distance restriction. Whether a statutory city can do that. So that is in there for now and we will come back to you and we would. Recommend whether or not that can stay in there. Um, there is also an hours of operation regulation. We've left placeholders. Or what might, wh- what the council might fill in. And again, I would invite some input from Camille on that to. Uh, make recommendations on from staff's point of view. There is a public view of the natural medicine business, um such that there are requirements that it be screened or covered. Uh, there is a lighting for the natural medicine business such that the um entrances, parking lots and exterior. Exterior walkways are well lit. Uh, there are requirements regarding the storage of the medicines in the business. There are, there is a requirement for um air filtration and ventilation systems so as. The odors from the natural medicine business not to um leave the the premises. There is uh some security on disposal provisions. And uh then there are some processing um provisions. Then we have added uh a definition of a nuisance such that. If these um substances um are creating. Problems with regard to. Impacts on adjacent ground. They would be or or into the municipal storm system. Uh, they would be uh creating a nuisance and they could be enforced against as a nuisance enforcement. Against a nuisance includes not only. Ticketing them to go into municipal court and to possibly be fined by the municipal judge if he finds. That a nuisance has been created, but also the ability to abate the nuisance. And make sure that the nuisance is uh stopped. In other words, not just fining the person over and over. But actually abating, getting the the nuisance to be stopped. And then finally, there are some um penalty provisions that just track with the. Purple Creek Municipal Code and wraps it wrap into this ordinance, the the general. Uh, penalty provisions in the municipal code. And at that point. Again, this is. This is not anything you need to make a decision on tonight. Uh, this will come back before you um for a public hearing. And more discussion and you can certainly, uh, we would certainly provide some information between now and then. A lot of things that I read to you. I would like to provide you just in writing. You can kind of mull over. Kind of the big picture issue, which is, you know, is this even something you feel like you need or want to do? To regulate these businesses. Um, but again, if you don't. Put limits on at least where they will go. Uh, between now and January first, it's possible that someone would open a business. And um you could not then after the fact. Tell that person to move their business because they would be grandfathered in uh to their location. So um I will stop and. Um, see if you have any questions at this point and then following those questions, I would request that Camille. Present to you um her recommendations on. Where these businesses could be located and what some uh hours of operation might be.
Um, Erin, I do have one question. Does the legislation? Define. The quantity that like a maximum quantity somebody can consume during these administrative sessions?
I don't know that it defines a maximum quantity. I would have. He might have some.
Part of my my concern just overall is um. The effects of hallucinogens can last several hours. And so when you look at the hours of operation. Would we be exceeding and would we be putting people in a dangerous? Position that they are not. However, you wanted to find it no longer under the influence before they leave these healing centers. And then are we creating other issues for. Public safety and and law enforcement?
And that's a great question, and that is why some jurisdictions have decided they don't want to have any. Hours of operation regulations for that very reason.
Just saying, was any of these businesses operating now or is it after the first of the year they started?
They can't operate until they get a state license and they cannot get a state license until January of twenty twenty five. Should not be operating now. They would be, they would be illegally operating if they're operating now.
Well, we talked about was C one zone. It'd be the only zone that we've talked about. I don't know if she can't hear us or if she's having technical difficulties.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me? Okay, um, so reading through this and discussing a little bit with Erin, I was considering uh the C one zone. However, with the current um restriction of a thousand feet from residential structures. The C one that we do have south of um Bennett and Myers um is in the gaming overlay district. And of course, it is surrounded by residential zones, so I'm not sure. If that's something we want to consider or Erin, if you knew if we could restrict. To the C one zoning in certain areas like on the. Outer limits of town like off County Road eighty nine and north of like Gold King Mountain Inn. Is that something that we could consider? Additionally, um, I was if we. Come back and revisit this, I'd like to maybe consider an overlay zone for this, but I'm in more in-depth conversation with Erin. And I know that there was some conversation with Bud. And the concern, of course, that Mayor brought up about letting people go and be discharged before they're ready. Um, which brings up, how do you regulate the hours of operation? And I didn't know if putting a limit on. When the last. A participant could be seen is the same type of restriction. Like we will take the last participant at six P M. And but the center, you know, releases them when they feel that they're ready. Is that the same type of restriction?
It probably goes a little too far.
Okay. So then I don't really have a recommendation on hours of operation except. Um, what I just mentioned because again, that that is the concern if someone is not ready to be released and. They're closed. You know, how does that work? More discussion, I think.
Cause they want that person to be. Ready to be released before. So I think some are not putting hours, but. I think we have more of this to discuss before the next meeting. I mean. Yeah, I think C one is probably the best. Again, while the houses were for sure statutory cities. Can regulate a thousand feet from houses. So Erin has to look at that. So I don't think we're ready for that yet discussion either on housing, but you can't opt them out. And then we need to look at. Spillage from if they're on the schools. You know, is a thousand foot enough or, you know? The one thing I want to bring up that I don't. If the childcare facility does go in in the future and somebody puts something in. And they're within a thousand foot of that, that doesn't make them go away. They're there first. So just so you kind of know that from my history. If they're already there and the childcare goes in down the block. They don't have to stop doing what they're doing. The childcare came in after they started business. So just as long as you know that going forward. Are you okay with that? Did you hear me?
Yes, I did, and that was a very good explanation.
So what do we need to do tonight?
Just first reading, so you don't do anything. You still have to. And so the uh. First meeting in December, I guess, before we appear before you for second reading and you have to have a public hearing on it. And again, we don't have to take action that night. We're gonna also have a meeting on the eighteenth. Of December, so you could kick it two, two more weeks, but you get it adopted before the first of the year. So that's kind of a. It's just first reading. Is that all you have?
That is, that was great. Thank you so much, Frank.
So then would there be a motion?
Motion to approve on first reading.
Can I get a motion?
Can you just let it go because then they go anywhere. So I think you need some regulation.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty point four dash ten, second.
Go please.
Yes. Yes.
And agenda item D, public hearing to consider approval of resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty one for a variance to this. To setback requirements in the R three four zone district at certain real property. Notice north thirty feet, L eighteen dash twenty, B four. Purple Creek Freeman Edition, three zero eight North Second Street, Public Creek, Colorado. Oh, do I? Sorry, Camille, go ahead.
No problem. So tonight I have a request from applicant Robert Halsted. He's requesting a variance for the construction of a hundred and sixty square foot shed on the property at three oh eight North Second Street. Um, he is requesting that the hundred and sixty square foot shed be placed approximately eighteen inches from the rear property line. Where a ten foot setback is required and eighteen inches from the south side setback where a five foot. Setback is required. I just want to give you a little, um, I know you guys have your packet and you can see a small picture. But the property has some severe lot constraints. It's approximately point zero five acres. And it's a very narrow lot. Currently on the property is a four hundred and fifty square foot, single family home. He's requesting the shed for additional storage. Um, there are three people gonna be living there full time. I do believe the applicant is online as well, so he can provide a little bit more detail for you. They, all the criteria for the variants have been met and staff is recommending approval.
Yeah, I think I should have been at first. Alright, so um, Camille, I'm gonna go ahead and read my opening statement.
Okay.
Um, I will now open the public hearing on the application of Robert Halsted for a variance in the R three four neighborhood residential district. Notice of this hearing has been given as requested by the Purple Creek Development Code and copy of such notice and of the publisher's affidavit are hereby made. A part of the record of this proceeding. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether to approve a variance to allow the construction of a one hundred sixty square foot shed. In the R three four zone district on property known as three zero eight North Second Street, Public Creek, County of Teller, Colorado. In considering the matter, this hearing will address the approval standards and criteria set forth in section four dot six dot two of the Purple Creek Development Code. The procedure to be followed for the public hearing will be as follows. First, city staff will first present and summarize the case. I will then ask if any council member has questions. Second, the applicant or the applicant's representative may present any evidence in favor of granting the application. I will then ask if any council member has questions. Third, at the conclusion of the applicant's case, any persons wishing to speak in support of the application may present evidence. Fourth, any persons wishing to speak against the application may then present evidence. Fifth, then I will ask for a motion closing public comment. Sixth, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence and any council member may ask the applicant questions. All presenters and witnesses will identify themselves and provide their addresses before speaking. Or address is not necessary, thank you. All statements and testimony shall be addressed to the council and not to the applicant. At the conclusion of the hearing, the city council will reconvene and will deliberate and may and may make a decision on the application. The council may grant or deny the application and then approve the resolution granting or denying the application. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the planning commission or of the city council to the form or substance of these proceedings? Then when the city staff will now present the case.
Okay, I did, I can just um follow that up with um the applicant has met the requirements. And criteria for approval of section four point six two of the City of Purple Creek Development Code. And staff does recommend approval of the variant subject to the condition number one. Which is no permit shall be required if the proposed shed is less than two hundred square feet in size. And the maximum of one accessory building per primary structure. Accessory building square footage shall not exceed fifty percent of the primary structure square footage and shall not be taller than the primary structure. And with that, I do believe, like I said, the applicant is online.
Before the applicant speaks, um, any council members, do you have any questions at this time? Okay, then we will move on on to the applicant. Are you online?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, good evening and I really appreciate your time. Uh, I just wanted to provide like a little background on kind of our situation and initially. We bought the place with the intentions of just as like a kind of like a getaway. Once we started. Going there, we found that we were spending more time up there than we were here in our primary home in the Springs. So uh, we started kind of toying around with the idea of kind of moving up there full time, but. Of course, the property is not really designed for a full-time living. So our intent is to put a shed on there so we can put like. Overflow stuff in the shed so we can make the house kind of hospitable for my family. And I just wanted to add. Overflow stuff in the shed so we can make the house kind of hospitable for my family. And I just wanted to add, um. We, we learned the difference between like there's a tourist cripple creek and then there's the the town of cripple creek and we really just fell in love with the town. Uh, we went to to the high school production, uh, Miss Annie's uh, class and, uh, I saw like. How happy the kids were and how involved the community was. And I was like, this is what I want for my family. And so we moved our daughter there temporarily. Because, uh, she was struggling down here. She was a runaway. She was barely. Um, passing her classes. She would hide in the bathroom and to avoid school. Um, sorry, I'm making this a long story, but. Long story short is now my daughter is living there full time. She's a straight A student. And she's just absolutely in love with the town and the school and we are just completely grateful. But until we are able to kind of have that extra storage, we're kind of bouncing between. Cripple Creek and the Springs, so it kind of leaves my daughter who's sixteen. There, you know, temporarily without us a few days a week. And so basically this shed is more than just a shed to us. It's like. The final piece of the puzzle so we can be up there and be with our family full time again. So. Again, I really, uh. Would appreciate the approval and the consideration and thank you very much for your time.
Awesome, thank you. Um, at this time, are there any persons wishing to speak in support of the application? Hearing now, is there anyone who wishes to speak to speak against the application? Alright, since there are no further statements, I will ask for a motion closing public comment.
I'll make a motion to reclose public comment.
So, go please. Mayor John Brown?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
You're wrong.
Yes.
Mayor Darren? Yes. Uh, because there were no comments against, we will not need time for rebuttal of the evidence. Um. Without being said, any further discussion. And I can speak firsthand of the fact that your daughter is an outstanding student, so. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And also the Christmas decorations are gonna be ten times better.
Without being said, um, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve resolution number two zero two four dash two one. A second.
Go please.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Welcome to the public.
Thank you so much. It's an honor.
Consider approving resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty, a resolution amending resolution two thousand two dash zero one. Establishing the criteria for granting the waiver of building and planning fees for governmental and nonprofit organizations. Uh, Camille.
Um, hello again. Okay, so this is the second go around. We took your comments and made a few changes to the resolution. Um, then after speaking with Frank, um, I got his blessing to actually. Waive the fees for the governmental entities like Teller County State and Federal Agencies and School Districts. However, I still would like to administer administer some type of fee. Uh, for nonprofits, which we did expand on the definition. And added the buildings approved by the city and constructed on city owned property. Um, I just thought I could make this easy for everybody. Like, you guys wanted some more math from me. But if we just had a permit fee that was one hundred dollars, I'm recommending that we charge twenty five percent of any permit fee. Um, not including any outsourced, like our electrical permit fees or any. Um, indirect costs associated with the permits. So if a permit fee was a hundred dollars, the applicant would pay twenty five dollars. That's the simplest way I think I could put it.
If it's county, state, federal, with anybody, any of those wanting to build in the city. Uh, the apartment fees will be waived. Something that I still think is out there is the electrical does cost the city money. So I do think they should pay if there's any. Didn't they just call it out of pocket money that the city?
Yeah, that that is in there.
What if we end up losing an inspector and have to outsource for any other inspection besides electrical?
Yeah, you know, right now, that's correct. King does all inspections except electrical, but if for some reason Ken left. And we had to hire the company to do all inspections, then it would be all out of pocket. Then I think it's different. So we would need to put that wording in there.
That is in there. It's currently in there.
Just a hypothetical and I may never come up, but if. If the project is approved and started and agreed that the outsource whatever services are. Payed for by the applicant and then a staff member leaves and then there's more outsourcing to be done, um.
They're going over that.
Okay.
I think you have to. I don't think we have, some of the things that we have, public funds should go to. Offset someone else's benefit, whether it's a governmental agency or not. That's what I was coming from. So. But other, just the building permit, yeah, I'm good with what, waiving it for governmental entities. That's my history is that too. Instead of charging, I'm gonna lose people to waive stuff for.
Hey, guys, the audio is really bad.
Well, I have to agree with the use of public funds. We need to be responsible. Well, and so I agree with the out of pocket extension. Be handled by the applicant if needed for. Services.
That's the resolution, so you can adopt. And if something comes up down the road, council in the future can amend because it's just a resolution. Just give staff direction on issuing permits.
Um, any questions, discussions? Right, can I get a motion to this?
Oh, I'm pushing the resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty. Resolution two thousand two dash zero one. No second.
Go please. Solutionary. Want me going?
Yes.
Mayor John Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item F. Second reading and public hearing to consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero eight. An ordinance of the city council for the city of Public Creek, Colorado. Imposing a temporary moratorium on the sale of all plots, all curmains, burials, and declaring an emergency in Mount Pismo Cemetery. Historic preservation and planning coordinator, Maya Trivio.
Hello, Council Mayor. Good to see you virtually. Um, so can I ask really quickly, are there people in the room for public hearing? Just so I know how long to make this presentation?
There's quite a few, yes.
Okay, awesome. Alrighty, so I'm going to share my screen. Um. Okay. So I wanted to go back a little bit farther, um, so that the public kind of understands where this is coming from. I know that council. Has been, um, in the loop with a lot of happenings. Um, can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I know council has been in the loop with a lot of things happening at the cemetery, um, but basically I took over. Management of the cemetery, um, in January. And since then, some things have kind of come up. Um, that as long term planning as well as day to day operations, um. Have have shown me that it is best to, um, put a temporary moratorium on sales of plots. Um, and for reasons that I will now explain to you. Um, so I wanted to put this. Um, these images up first, um, to kind of show you how the cemetery has changed over time. Um, so these two images, first of all, um, are. Taken from the same place. Um, so you can see this headstone right here. Watts is in this one right here. And as you can see, um, there's a lot of. Graves that we see in this old image that we don't see in the image that was taken on this summer. And so I think that really is a good foundation for, um, why I'm bringing this moratorium to you all. Um, the simple fact is, we need to update our documentation. Uh, we need to fully understand, um. Everything that has happened at the cemetery, the whole history of the cemetery. Um. I also wanted to talk a little bit about, um, kind of the history of the cemetery. Um. It's what I like to call a cowboy cemetery. Um, so basically what has happened, um, is that. The cemetery, um, land was donated not to the city as an entity, um, but to the public. Uh, to be used as a cemetery, um, in the, um, late eighteen hundreds. It was not managed at this time. There's a period of about, uh, fifteen years in which there wasn't any management. And, um, I've talked to Missy some as well about that that might have actually been a longer period than what we have record of. Um, so basically what happens with this is that, um. A member of the public would come to the cemetery. They would dig their own grave for their family member. They would bury the family member and they may or may not have placed a headstone. So we lost, we lost a lot of records over time. Um, other things that happened with the cemetery, um, you can see in the second image here. Um, this is some evidence of what might have been a grave cover at some time, but as you can see, there's no grave marker. Um, also over time, um, trees have grown in, um, so it's really hard to tell if there are actually burials back in these trees. We have, um, active plots that are up for sale in these trees and we don't know what is there. Um, we also have a lot of dirt roads. Um, these dirt roads, based on my records, are not official roads. Um, meaning that it's very possible that there's burials, um, where we now drive. Um, the other thing we have to deal with being in a mountain cemetery, um, is things like sinkholes and rocks. And, um, uh, any kind of, uh, issue that you could encounter in a, in a mountain town, um, that could prohibit or, um. Hinder a burial. Um, so basically, we just need to have more records. Um, additionally, um, since it's very snowy, um, we deal with snow, um, during burials as well. Uh, the picture on the left is, um, the same area that is photographed in the right. As you can see, this is quite populated. There's lots of headstones here. You can't see them in the snow. Um, we do have a pin system. Um, you can see them here, um, that. Is correlated, um, to real locations. Um, so I'll speak a little bit later about how. One of the biggest issues at the cemetery is correlating real property with, um, with property rights. Um, the issue with the pinning system is that we can't see them. So all of these pins are spread out throughout, um, as you can see in this image, you can't. Tell where they are and you certainly can't tell where they are when there's snow or other things that we experience in the mountains. Um. So as I said, one of the big issues with the cemetery is unmarked graves. This is just from a very, very long history. Um, I like this image right here because it kind of shows you what I'm talking about. So this is a very old section of the cemetery. Um. This appears to be an open plot. Um, it's marked in my records as an open plot. That's the one here on the left where my cursor is. Um. Tom and I, the maintenance, um, uh, the caretaker and I have been out there. We think that that's actually occupied. But there's no way to tell, um, at this point in time. Um, we've also been dealing with, again, a long history, um, of undocumented or lost, um, documentation. So basically. We have a piece of paper that says somebody bought this plot, but we don't know if someone was buried there. Um, partial documentation, very similar, um, as well as the, the real location versus match location that I talk about. And you can definitely see this, um, if you can see my cursor, where the curbs are. So essentially all of our plots are four foot wide. Um, on the map. So if I sell a plot. And it's four feet wide, say I were to sell this plot here. But turns out this is actually longer because there's a curb. Now this person doesn't have the full four feet. And you have to think about this on the scale of forty two acres, we, or sorry. Um, thirty acres. We have about thirty acres of plotted land, uh, or plotted, uh, cemetery, um, area. The whole cemetery is a little bit bigger than that because we have a memorial and things like that. But so every time I have an issue like this, think about it, times a very large, um, area. Um, and then grave placement as well, very similar. You can see that these two headstones are not actually in line. Um, so the issue there is that we don't know if someone is buried at the top of the grave, the bottom of the grave, that kind of thing. So. This is where the plan comes into play. So the city has been working towards, um. Getting the entire cemetery, um, mapped and scanned. So we are planning. And we just had another meeting today, um, to start this process in summer twenty twenty five. This would do ground penetrating radar for the entire, uh, the entirety of the cemetery. Um, it will also locate those pins that I talked about earlier so that we can start to locate graves when we have snow. Um, it will also do a GPS map so that, um, public works can actually go out to the cemetery. Um, they can stand on a grave and they can know that that is the proper location. Um, the biggest thing again with this is identifying historic grave markers, um, or historic graves because they're not marked. So we are in the process of planning that. And that's really where the cemetery moratorium comes into place, a temporary one, is that I'm asking council. That we temporarily suspend sales until this project is complete so that we can better serve the community. Um, and have a better documentation of our history. Um. This is just kind of a diagram to show you really how this causes problems. So. And I can't hear you guys at all. So if you're, if. If you have any comments, just stop me. But, um, so we'll see on this, um, left picture, um, that there's some colored dots as well as a circle. This circle is indicating a historic headstone, right? So say that I, I have these maps. Um, the map says that, um, there's a headstone right here. The problem, one of the problems that we're running into is that when we actually go out to the field. Um, those headstones are not always located in the area that my map is telling me. Um, so this is an example of, um, say a family purchased all of these plots. And, um, this was, you know, before my time, before, um, anybody who's in my position's time. Um. I go out to bury someone in, let's say, red. And turns out this historic grave marker is not down here where we thought. It's actually up here. So now we have to do two transfers, um, to make sure that our documentation is right, as well as that the family is taken care of. That transfer. Is all of these steps. And then, once I'm done with all of these steps, updating multiple documents, um, filling out multiple pieces of paperwork. Then we have to go to the clerk and recorder. We have to cancel out the previous document, get a new one. Um, so it's just a very extended process, one that really puts a lot of undue stress on families. This is sometimes multiplied depending on. What is going on in the cemetery. So say, alright, we had to move two people. It's fine. They're all in the same area. Until we realize that that original grave marker that we thought was right here is actually in the center. So now I have to move three graves. Okay, great. Again, it's three transfers. Everybody's happy until it compiles. And now somebody was buried in the wrong spot. And now this whole row is messed up and we have to move all those people again. Basically, what I'm trying to say here is that. Not knowing what we're currently dealing with has just become a problem for day to day operations. We really need to understand where we have historic burials, mark them, um, understand where our headstones are at. Um, so that we don't keep having to basically clean up, um, one, one thing at a time. Um, there's also significant cost, um, both as far as staff time for, um, the, uh. H P coordinator position as well as public works, as well as, um, the cemetery maintenance crew. Um, there's lots of actions that have to happen depending on which kind of situation we're dealing with. It's a lot of time and it's a lot of stress for the family. Um, so like I said, the solution and plan here is to get ground penetrating radar, G. Um, so like I said, the solution and plan here is to get ground penetrating radar, GPS mapping, pin identification, and then integrate all of this into a software so that our sales and our burials could run more smoothly. So it is a temporary ask. Um, it's not forever. It's just so that we can better serve the community. Um, and kind of on that again, I just want to talk about really how much it would put on a family to ask them to continue doing these transfers. Um. This is the hardest time in people's lives when they have to bury a family member. And to have to call somebody and say, I'm sorry, your husband doesn't get to be buried in the family plot because we had a misdocumentation. And now we have to move him. We have to figure out something else. It's, it's just too much to ask of a family, too much to ask of the community. Um, and so I think that is really the biggest thing here is that we want to make sure that we're serving people, that we are doing the right thing by them, as well as honoring our history. Um, so staff is recommending um, that we pass a temporary moratorium to end um, August thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Um, the whole cemetery project should be complete by then. Our documents should be updated. Um, and we can begin to accept applications, complete burials um, with a much more informed background. Um, and the last thing I'll say about this is um, that's um, that this will still accommodate um, immediate need. Um, so you'll notice that the language of the um, the ordinance is that um, inurnments, so meaning cremains, burials, um, would have a moratorium as well as plot sales. But um, with the exception for um, immediate need. So should a family um, come to us, they've already purchased a plot in Mount Piscata Cemetery and they need an immediate um, full burial, we would accommodate that. Similarly, if a family approaches us who hasn't purchased a plot in Mount Piscata Cemetery, um, in need of a full burial, um, we would still allow that with a few exceptions. They would have to um, purchase a plot that is in um, our, our sort of winter area that's already been measured, that we're fairly certain doesn't have historic burials. Um, but we are looking to still accommodate those that are in an immediate need. And again, temporary, it will be lifted for pre-planning um, come September next year. I think that's all I have.
All right, I just have one question before I open it for public hearing. Um. At the first reading, I believe you said that you and Tom had identified a space that could accommodate up to thirty plots, give or take. You say fairly certain?
Yes, so yes, so basically, um, we've cross-compared um, just documents of um, where the cemetery originally was. Um, so it's kind of the back of the cemetery. Um, usually there's indications, um, like I pointed out in one of the earlier slides, um, as far as um, some like rocks, people would use rocks to cover the graves. So we find a lot of times in the unmarked burials that there's rocks. Um, there's usually signs of um, the ground being disturbed. Uh, so it usually has um, actually a more compact um, uh, feeling. So you can go in with probes and things like that to determine if the ground has been previously disturbed. Um. Also, the way the grass grows back in, um, and the way that there is a uh, sloping. So sometimes it'll be indented or they'll be raised um, in the area that we've identified for the winter um, section. Uh, there is no uh, evidence of any historic markers. There's no evidence of um, any raised or sunken engravings. And we have used probes to um, determine kind of the, I guess you would say, the density of it, um, which is currently indicating to us that it has not been disturbed, but it is just natural um, ground.
Thank you. Um, this report.
Can I ask last time? I can't remember. When is the ground penetrating radar gonna happen?
Um, so we were going to have it June through July. Um, Jeff and I spoke to them today about adding um, some additional portions um, that extend beyond the um, perimeter of the cemetery, just to make sure we um, have all our bases covered. Um, so with that, we're probably gonna have to um, start in May. Obviously pending that snow is melted. Um, but May through July is the estimated timeline. Um, the end of July, they will start um, compiling our records. And so we hope that those records will um, be done again by that August deadline. But the actual scanning and mapping, or the scanning portion of it, sorry, um, will be May through July.
Great.
Any questions?
Jeff talked to uh, Gibraltar, you're on the cemetery. And thought it would be a good idea if we went a little bit outside the cemetery, if he was, Mr. Beatty was okay with that. So that's what she's thinking about. But we was willing to hold back if they, how they were burying or where. So we were thinking, you know, we're also in the landslide, that we might want to look onto that property a little bit to see if there's any graves over there. Since we have them out there. Yep. So that's what she's referring to.
Do I need to make a motion to go in the public hearing for this one?
Hang on a minute. I don't think you have to have a motion to go in the public hearing. Just, you can open the public.
But I need, I need a motion to.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's all you need to do. Thank you.
Okay, yes. Alright, so at this time, I would like to open up for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this matter? The public comments, um, can I get a motion without a comment?
A second.
Vote please.
Yes.
Uh, before we move on to agenda item G, I need to take a brief break. Um. And then we go to recess for five minutes.
You have a second reading, so you have to text this very soon.
I'm sorry. It's like the third time I've done that.
We did that. We moved next year's budget to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We took it out of reserves, is what the council action was. So we do have that money. Once council approves the budget for next year in December, then that money will be there for the ground penetrating radar and the TIS.
Further discussion? I can make a motion, please?
Look, motion approved, number two zero two four dash zero eight is written.
Vote please. Pastor Bowman?
Yes.
Pastor Shaw?
Yeah.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Senator Neri?
Yes.
Yes. I've had too much coffee today, so I make a motion that we take a five-minute recess. Alright, thank you. Much appreciated. If we move on to agenda item G, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, supporting the grant application to burn energy and minimal impact assistance funds grant, More Housing Now and Land Use Initiatives Program from the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. Uh, for this agenda item, I will have to recuse myself because I serve on the board that um, works with this particular request. So I will.
Need a break if you gotta go over there.
Good evening, City Council. Uh, Jeff Moser, Special Project Director for the City of Cripple Creek. Uh, just want to make sure you guys can hear me.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. Um, so this is, uh, we, we touched on this at the last council meeting uh, on a different um, request for a donation of property. We are looking at the uh, uh, Height Country Haven Development that is being done by uh, ground, grind, ground floor holdings and Timber Wolf Construction on A Street between Womack and Wayland. Um, the property being donated is on B Street uh, between Waymac and Wayland. And this request is for uh, 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 permission to seek grant funding. Uh, specifically, uh, this grant is called More Housing Now. It is a subset of the energy impact uh, funding. Um, it's specific to assisting with housing developments throughout the state. And in this case, we are looking at infrastructure uh, monies, which includes uh, water sewer and uh, street improvements of curb gutter and sidewalk lights uh, is what the funding can be used for. We do not have an amount yet. We're working on that. The grant did open November first, so a couple of days ago. So we are working on the grant right now. Uh, a condition of the grant is that the city uh, council is supportive of the application. And so that's why this is in front of you today uh, so that it can get approval and then be included in the grant application submission uh, once, once we're ready to submit that.
So Jeff, you said the city does not have to match the grounds. You said a ground floor values would be able to match?
So yes, that, yep, I'm, I, yeah, that's in the memo. So the grant, the amount that can be requested, the project amount can be two million, up to two million with a twenty-five percent match. This project is, is well under that amount, but the uh, twenty-five percent match will be uh, fulfilled by ground floor holdings. Um, and we can also count any cash value that the city has contributed to the project. And in this case, city council did approve cap fee waivers for the sixteen units um, that, that um, Timber Wolf is going to be constructing. And that can be counted towards that, that twenty-five percent cash, cash match.
What they're, what they're going to say, so it'll be looped. The whole block of there, the block to have, whatever they want to have utilities. Or tie them to, or no, it's way. Okay.
Yeah, the utility, utilities will go from B Street, or I'm, I'm sorry, A Street to B Street. Um, and will end at B Street uh, with a fire hydrant for water. Um, uh, obviously sewer runs the other direction because that's the top of the hill. So there won't be a loop, looped system at the current time, but there's definitely opportunity as properties in that area start to develop, to be able to loop that into another uh, another water line.
They're going to fire hydrant and a feedway.
Yeah. People was putting tourists that wanted to run the sewer lines up the alley. So to this property, we were gonna do a twenty-five foot wide to get water and sewer in there. So now they're talking to the people that own lots on that and they're trying to get ten-foot easements on the back from those people so that they can extend water and sewer all the way up the alley all the way to the end.
Yeah, there, there are, there are three property owners um, up there. There's four lots. I shouldn't say lots, four properties, but two of the properties are owned by the same person. Um, they have been contacted and they have given verbal um, permission to do the easement. So we, that will come before uh, the council as well, is the uh, the utility easement. Uh, once we get that drafted and, and ready to go, that will come before you as well. So that the city would take over that, that ten-foot utility easement on the north side of those properties.
What's, what's this utility? Uh, what about gas lines? I know electrics over here, but uh, where does gas lines get around?
The gas is cutting up the alley. It's not an alley. Uh, there's, there's four sections to where they're proposing none of them. I'm talking, I'm thinking of Gibraltar. Never mind.
Yeah, so this, this project does not have gas. It does have, it does have underground electric.
So we'll be underground electric. So you mean for all the utilities in that alley, twenty-five foot even?
Yes, because the alley's expanded. It's, it's larger than a typical alley in, in the city limits. It's a twenty-five foot alleyway.
So we have to, as a now sixteen houses by Timber Wolf and then some by the little camp housing partners.
Yeah, yep, yep, that'll, that allows us because the gold camp, the property where the city owns currently is on the B Street end of the block. And because that will be mandated affordable housing, this More Housing Now grant will allow us to put utilities through the entire block, which then makes those, those other properties um, buildable. Because currently those owners would not have access to a utility. That's why there was so much support from them to allow for the, the, the water easement.
Timber Wolf still planning on doing five of their houses, of their sixteen, under the affordable housing?
Uh, the interesting thing is the More Housing Now grant, they consider a hundred and forty percent AMI as affordable. All of Gibraltar's, or I'm sorry, all of Timber Wolf and Ground Floor Holdings homes will be and be under that one forty percent AMI, which is great. Um, then they do plan on a minimum of five units that would fall under the Prop one twenty-three funding, which we are hoping are eighty percent AMI. Um, they can be a little bit higher than that. Uh, the, the state allows for a hundred percent. But as a city, we want them to try to keep that number down to eighty percent. And this grant would help them um, not have to spend as much on the infrastructure for the utilities and that, that comes directly off the price on the house.
That's awesome. So we're gonna move down the infrastructure here, do you know yet?
He's got a company that's gonna do the infrastructure. He's got, but I don't think we'll have the number. I guess we'll have to give that number because that has to be in the application. And then the match, the hundred and forty-four thousand you waived for tap fees goes against the twenty-five percent and they're gonna make up the rest of the twenty-one and so that's getting close to it. When all this drives the price of the houses down with its two million. No, it's so it's way below that. Yeah, it's gonna be below two million.
But yeah, it's, it's way below two million. Um. Dola did recommend that we go for the maximum ask that we could on the project. And at one point, they were considering looking at going all the way to C Street. But we just don't have time um, with this grant being due here December second to come up with another housing development that would be mandated as affordable. And so, so they're gonna, they're gonna go for the, the, the installation between A and B Street only.
Okay.
Well, it's open right now. We're, we're waiting.
Somebody, this is great.
Yeah, that was really good.
Wait, has anybody else in the work schedule? No.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one, two thousand twenty-four, number best twenty.
Yes, can?
Vote?
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
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 Thank you, council.
Twenty special projects, meaning not not opening events. This, this is what he's, he's been going to all these meetings with Dola. Just, we know that. Yes.
Agenda item H, public hearing, consider approval of a new optional premises liquor license for the Schloss Show located at three zero five South Forest Street.
The Schloss Show needs to leave the room.
I need to do this first, right? Okay. Okay, here we go. I will now open the public hearing on the application of, of Schwab Show for a new optional premises liquor license. Notice of this hearing has been given as required by section forty-four dash three dash three eleven Colorado revised statute and copy of such notice and of the publisher's affidavit are hereby made a part of the record of this proceeding. For civil to Colorado revised statute forty-four dash three dash one zero three twenty-seven, the Cripple Creek City Council, acting as the local liquor licensing authority, has jurisdiction to conduct this public hearing under the Colorado Liquor Code and also under the provisions of the Townes Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether a new optional premises liquor license should be issued to the applicant. The license is for the Ice Casters event, location at three zero five South Forest Street, Cripple Creek, Colorado. In considering that issue, the council will address the criteria set forth in section forty-four dash three dash three twelve of the Colorado revised statutes. The procedure to be followed for public hearing will be as follows. First, city staff will first present and summarize the case. Second, the applicant or the applicant's representative may present any evidence in favor of the granting of the application. Third, at the conclusion of the applicant's case, any persons wishing to speak in support of the application may present evidence. Four, any persons wishing to speak against the application may then present evidence. Four, any persons wishing to speak against the application may then present evidence. Uh, five, then I will ask for a motion closing public comment. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. All presenters and witnesses will identify themselves before speaking. All statements and testimony shall be addressed to the council and not to the applicant. At the conclusion of the hearing, the city council will reconvene and will deliberate and may make a decision on the application. The council may grant the application, deny the application, or grant the application with conditions. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the planning commission or of the city council to the form or substance of these proceedings? Right, hearing none. The city staff will now present the case.
Good evening, Council. Um, this application was brought to me in September for this optional premises. Now, this, this is a little different than the ones that you usually approve. This one has to, we have to, uh, the governing body has to have an ordinance that approves this license and that is regulated by the state. And our code does allow for this. Um. It is section six five seventy for optional premise. So we do have that regulation. Um, they brought this with everything you have here. It was um put in the paper as stated. The property has been posted according to state regulations. Um, and I believe Jessica's here. If you have any other questions for her.
I just have one question, if you don't mind coming up to that question. Sorry, Brent. Um, just specific to the, who's going to be serving?
We have a staff of about ten people that are gonna be serving everyone over time.
And do they get like serve safe training or what training do they get before serving?
Cody and I have been talking about it. The white tips for me.
Okay, cool. That was mine.
That was, is, is, I'm assuming it's inside the, where the ass count, it's inside the, or these guys.
To be, and so it's, it's gonna be the first pub located inside the Ice Castle. Um, and so it's like a little big blue, like little ice, as bar, ice dome or sorts. But well, uh, people will come up and be able to order cocktails. They'll have like fireplaces and just have like little hangout areas.
And is there, so is there like a defined entrance where?
Can you just go right or do you have to go into the Ice Castles or?
You have to go into the Ice Castle and then from inside the Ice Castle, there's a separate line where someone from Ice Castles will be monitoring the Q line, checking IDs, and then will check again the IDs when they come to the bar.
And I'm just, um, one question for Ice Castles. Have you served liquor at other? Do you mind coming up to the bottom side?
Ice Castles, uh, to answer your question, yes, we have served alcohol at other castles before. We started at our New Hampshire location. We've been a slow roll out of this to other markets because of the abundance of caution. Um, and we felt comfortable with our partners here in Cripple Creek, but we do it here.
So just curious, when you go, do you purchase your tickets to the Ice Castles? Did you score there if you started at the bar? Or you got, I know, you might have a ticket to the Ice Castle to purchase from the Polar Pop. You have any questions? So be in right next.
No, it sounds like you have your, I, I'm just, you know, as far as entrance and training and, yeah. Um, anything else, Jessica, before we open up to comment?
I think so, other than Cody and I are just excited at the opportunity to um be part of something that brings tourism to the community. His family's been here for many generations, oftentimes working in the service industry. So we're just excited to, to be part of it.
Awesome. Well, then at this time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application? You may present evidence. Any persons wishing to speak against the application may then present evidence. As there is no comment, I will ask for a motion closing public comment.
I approach, we close by the comment.
And then, vote please.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw, who's accused. Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Subdivisionary?
Yes.
Mayor Durham?
Yes. Um, because no one spoke against, there's no need for rebuttal evidence. Um. All right, any discussion?
No, um, personally, I'm happy to see a local uh person able to do this.
Great. And my name is cool, so. Shows a tricky mistake. Um, so there's um, any other discussion? Can I get a motion, please?
I'm looking at the motion number three. We have new actual premises liquor license for the Schwab show, Schwab show, located in three zero five South West Street.
Hold on a second. Vote please.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes. I would say no. It was Tyler's brother.
So I read the question before then, everybody leaves. But as far as I read directly from the agenda before, people have said.
What else can we add, Chris?
So, um, moving on to executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A regarding discussions related to the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real personal or other property interest pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four B for a conference for legal counsel for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions and pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators all regarding land acquisition. Um, at this time, I will need everyone to exit the room.
Madam, Madam Mayor, that counted as a motion. If you could please have a second and then a vote on that, that would be good for the record, please.
I have some script. Uh, so I have a little bit.
We just need to make a motion, go on the executive session. I'll make a, I'll make a motion again in those executive session.
Oh, second, second.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Councilor Neri? Mayor Bowman Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.